Okay, we will call the January 29th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Roll call.
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandi Eber. She was just on. Daniel George.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you.
There a motion to approve the January 8th minutes. It's moved and seconded. Any corrections or objections on the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved and seconded. Anybody wishing to pull any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Now move on to our regular agenda. Can we please have staff's presentation in case 2024-0010?
Yes, thank you Chair Spinelli. Since 2018, improvements have been made along segments of 4th Avenue west of the project area between East Street to Cordova Street. And I'll just reiterate the project. So this is the Context Sensitive Solutions, or CSS, Transportation Project Review of the Design Study Report, or DSR, for AMAT's 4th Avenue Signals and Lighting Upgrades, Cordova Street to Ingrah Street. So since 2018, there have been improvements made along portions of West Avenue that are west of this project area. This project would extend those improvements from Cordova Street to Ingrah Street, so on 4th Avenue between those cross streets, with the purpose of the project being to upgrade signals and lighting systems. The 35% DSR is the second step in the Context Sensitive Solutions Transportation Project Review process. After the Planning and Zoning Commission's review, the project would go before the Urban Design Commission to complete the third and final step of the process. The primary decision of the Commission for the DSR is of the alternatives for the project. The DSR describes a no-build alternative. Alternative 1: to replace signals, lighting, and make roadway and sidewalk improvements. And Alternative 2: that would just replace signals and lighting. Alternative 1 is preferred because if those concurrent roadway and sidewalk improvements are not made, then the street would be out of compliance with municipal plans and design criteria. Municipal traffic engineering provided comments highlighting the improvements for non-motorized users. This includes a wider sidewalk, additional curb bulbs for easier crossings, and additional street lighting. The new lighting would also improve conditions for motorized users and replace aging infrastructure. The department recommends approval of the preferred alternative 1: traffic signals, lighting, roadway, and sidewalk improvements, subject to conditions 1 and 2 in the staff report, which requires submission of the public improvement plan to the Planning Department. The applicant and their representatives are here tonight to present upon the project. This is not a public hearing. Thank you, and that includes my summary of the staff report.
Any questions for staff? We will have the petitioner's presentation. Please state your name and patch the button.
My name is Will Webb. I'm with Kenny Engineering. We're a consulting firm that is working for DOT to design and push forward the project. As Elizabeth indicated, this is the AMAT's 4th Avenue Signals and Lighting, Cordova to Ingrah project. With me today, I've got Art Johnson, the Kenny Engineering Project Manager, Julia Hanson, the DOT Project Manager, as well as Julia Mackler, who is the owner's representative working for project management and engineering. So this project area is shown here on the slide, goes from Cordova to Ingrah Street. The Cordova Street intersection was reconstructed several years ago now, with the municipality's first phase of this project. So we'll be extending those improvements from that intersection east through the remainder of the Central Business District. DOT is managing this particular project since it is federally funded through AMAT's. So in 2018, we worked with the municipality to do an inventory of the traffic signal and lighting systems throughout downtown, from about 9th Avenue to 1st, and then from L Street to Ingrah Street. What we found was that 4th Avenue was most in need of improvements of all of the corridors, primarily the problems we were observing throughout downtown. It involved the power supplies, grounding issues, foundation failures, as well as corrosion on much of the equipment out in the field. The municipality has previously funded improvements on 4th Avenue from East Street to Cordova Street, and is currently working on design from G Street to East Street. So this is a separate phase going from Cordova to Ingrah that the municipality was able to get funded through the AMAT's program. Since it is federally funded, the program's a little bit different, the project process is a little bit different than the ones that have been managed by the municipality. Primarily, the differences include environmental process, so ensuring that we're not adversely impacting the environment and the built environment, as well as right-of-way clearance and certification and adherence to the tip, the AMAT's tip language. The photo shown here is of 4th Avenue east of Gambles, or Ingrah, sorry, Gamble Street, where the right-of-way is 60 feet wide. So we've got a narrow sidewalk, three lanes, no parking, and the lighting system has overhead wires and is otherwise rather dated. So the proposed improvements for this project include upgrading the traffic signals at Gamble Street and Ingrah Street. That will include, as well as new poles and new traffic signal controllers and cabinets and all of that, traffic signal indications over each lane, which should improve safety through the corridor. We'll be upgrading the street and pedestrian lighting, as well as electrical load centers to bring those all up to current standards, which will be similar to what was done to the previous phases to the west. Since we will be basically digging up the sidewalks to put in all the electrical equipment, we'll be replacing sidewalks and curb ramps to meet ADA standards, and then we'll be adjusting the lane widths to meet DCM criteria, which generally is narrowing those down. We'll also be replacing traffic signal interconnect through the corridor as well to current municipal And so this photo shows 4th Avenue west of A Street. This is going to be very similar to the proposed improvements, where we have three travel lanes. In our section, the travel lanes all go eastbound, but regardless, three travel lanes, two parking lanes, sidewalk. We'll have the blue-gray light poles that match the downtown comp plan, as well as supplemental As I mentioned, we'll be adjusting the travel lane widths. The goal here is to, is, the idea is that since we're excavating so much of the street anyway, to deal with the electrical improvements, that it, we need to also change curb line to meet ADA grades. And so since we're going to be replacing so much of the infrastructure anyway, it makes sense to narrow the travel lanes, to widen the sidewalks, to better comply with Title 21 and the downtown comp plan. This shows what's going on west of Gamble Street, where we have 80 feet of right-of-way. We'll be narrowing the lanes to 11 feet, parking lanes to 7 feet, and then the sidewalks will basically take up the remainder of the right-of-way, up to 14.5 feet. We've got a few areas where the right-of-way is constrained, and will, we may need to use up to a foot of the right-of-way to deal with constructability and grade changes at adjacent Similarly, east of Gamble, we're doing essentially the same type of thing, but the right-of-way in that segment is only 60 feet instead of 80 feet. In that segment, there's no on-street parking, and then the sidewalks will end up being a little bit narrower than the western segment. And again, as with the previous segment, we may need about a foot of right-of-way to deal with constructability. So the sidewalks will be up to 11 and 1/2 feet, but in some areas will be only 10.5 And then finally, I guess to go over what we've been doing to date with our public involvement, we've discussed the project with the downtown and Fairview Community Councils, as well as coordinated with the Ingrah Downtown Partnership and provided information for their newsletter. Going, I want to set back. Kenny Engineering has been working with the municipality on the previous phases as well, so we've actually been working with the local stakeholders for a number of years on these previous phases and on the improvements that have been occurring downtown. So we've got a bit of a history, thankfully, with what folks expect and what they'd like to see. On this project specifically, we've talked to the major stakeholders. And then going forward, we will have presence at the Anchorage Transportation Fair, which I believe is in March, a project open house when we get to the 95% design phase. We will continue outreach with the community councils and ADP. And as we get closer to construction, we will work with the individual business owners so that we can work with their business hours and ensure the traffic control plans are not too onerous on their operations. That is all I have prepared for you all.
I'd like to let the record reflect that we were joined by Commissioner Eber over the phone. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Krishna.
Sure. So of course, I work at the Downtown Partnership, so maybe I'll just take a few minutes to kind of both explain a little bit more about the maintenance challenges with sidewalks downtown, and then maybe ask some questions about how we minimize that. So of course, the Downtown Partnership does all of the sidewalks, no clearing downtown up to Gamble, east of that, it's the state, I believe. But it's a very different sort of sidewalk clearing than that happens there than anywhere else. We're actually moving snow entirely out of the sidewalk width, rather than blowing it back into the right-of-way behind the sidewalk. So I just want to acknowledge that every time we add pavement, right, we add sidewalk width, we also add a lot of maintenance challenges. So I guess my first question is just about how we, two things specifically to that, right? One is, how do we decide when a curb bulb is the right design feature? And then second, how do we minimize the amount of right-of-way installations? Because just for everyone's awareness, basically, the more things you have in the sidewalk, the smaller the equipment you can use to get around it, right? So if you've got a 10-foot stretch, we can take a bobcat and run a straight path. Once you've got a trash can a foot away from pedestrian light pole, we're essentially having staff hand shovel that, right? So the costs kind of go up and up as you have more things installed on the sidewalk. So first question, curb bulbs. Second question, how do we decide right-of-way installations? And then how do we make those easiest for maintenance?
I appreciate that question, and that's something I believe we'll have to work with your group as we go forward on. I don't think that's something that we've taken into too much consideration on the previous phases. Curb bulbs in general, we're planning to install those, I believe, at all of the intersections, which is consistent with the downtown comp plan that calls for, you know, making pedestrians more visible and all that. As far as the installations in the right-of-way, we do try to install signs on the light poles where we can, but often, it's not exactly in the same place that we'd like it to be. Further to the west, I know that there's more, more streetscape-type items like trashcans or by racks and whatnot. At this point, we haven't discussed those types of installations on this project, so that might be a good opportunity for us to work with you all to be proactive about that. Going forward, I think it'll be, we'll need to meet with you all to identify opportunities to make the design more maintenance-friendly.
Oh, Commissioner Pulis.
Thank you for your presentation. It was a pretty good one. I get the project, it's continuation of previous phases. With right-of-way respect, you guys have no major impacts besides driveways and sidewalks, that's pretty much it. You've met with all right-of-way owners, as you basically just said. Nothing's come up with anyone pushing back?
Commissioner Pulis, we actually have not met with everyone at this point. We, our current design assumes that all the driveways that are out there will stay in place. We plan to work with property owners and MOA traffic to reduce the driveways where we can and where they're not being used. The municipal traffic department is very interested in reducing the driveways that are, well, that are out there altogether. So that's something we'll be working with the property owners on as we go forward. However, the design that we have can accommodate all the driveways that are there now. So there's that. As far as right-of-way impacts, we don't anticipate any permanent right-of-way acquisition. We've got adequate right-of-way to put everything in that we'd like to see in the corridor. So we might have some temporary impacts as we build things and match driveways and whatnot, but beyond that, we don't expect anything permanent.
Okay. One more follow-up question. Regarding like green infrastructure, talking about things on the sidewalk, was there any talk to the MOA green infrastructure people about that, or how's that going? You guys did that on previous phases, right? Had some silver cells in them?
We, on previous phases, we have put in tree wells with the silver cells, as you mentioned. We had less, fewer travel lanes in those phases, so we had more room for sidewalk and more room for trees and whatnot. In this phase, we're not planning to do trees due to the narrower sidewalks. We are working with the municipality and watershed management on investigating green infrastructure. We don't really have a whole lot of room in the right-of-way. I mean, I know that the criteria starts at right-of-way wider than 60 feet. So we're in talks with them, but I don't know at this point what, if anything, that's going to look like, given the fully developed nature of the area.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Webb, thanks for the presentation. My interest in this question is around bicycle amenities. You note in the draft DSR that the comp plan, downtown comp plan identifies 4th Avenue from Cordova to Eagle as an on-street bicycle connection. It's unclear to me what consideration has been given to bicyclists in this design, so if you could help me better understand, that would be great.
Yeah, Commissioner Ron, thank you for that question. We are, we don't have any bicycle, dedicated bicycle facilities in the corridor. My understanding of the plans were that it was on-street, shared lane kind of a use for that connection, which I know isn't necessarily ideal, but given the, what else has been going on in the corridor and whatnot, it seems prudent to maintain consistency with that, with that approach. So there, there's sidewalks, there's travel lanes, that's what we got.
Commissioner George.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Webb, for your presentation. You already answered half my questions, particularly about not needing to acquire any right-of-way. That's good to hear. I'll note, this is a much older part of our town, and when you start digging into older properties, I know you find things you didn't quite expect. In this stretch of the project area, are there any notable or potentially significant right-of-way encroachments that will have to be rectified, since we're using the full 60-foot right-of-way now when we haven't before?
Commissioner George, that's, there, we do have a list of encroachments in the right-of-way. Most of them are fences and fairly minor. There are a few building awnings and entry, you know, vestibule-type things that are encroaching into the right-of-way, and the municipality is working on either getting those permitted or getting those cleared, because that is, as part of a federal project, that's one of the distinctions between a federal project and a city-funded project, is we have to have clearance of the right-of-way. And so the municipality is working on that, and I believe the major encroachments will be permitted rather than required to be removed, but that is something project management engineering is working on right now.
Just for clarification's sake, are permitted encroachments, are those required to be paid annually as a permit?
I honestly have no idea. Can I ask one of my teammates that's here?
I apologize, that might not be near Baileywick, so.
If I may. Do you know Julie?
Hi, I'm now going to say, sir, do you have any, okay, I'm not.
We don't know, sir. We can follow up if you'd like.
Just curious if we're going to have any surprises for folks, that, any community landmarks that might be in question, that's all I'm looking for.
I suspect it's more of a paperwork issue than it is a fee payment, but that's purely speculation on my part.
I see no further question. Oh, Commissioner Winchester.
I just want to follow up with Commissioner Ron a little bit. You know, even at this stage, it would be nice to see some bike amenities on one of those 11-foot lanes, even if it's just striping, you know, just, even if it doesn't make it to the final thing. There's a big outcry in town about DOT not being sensitive to the needs of bikers, and it seems like a missed opportunity. We do appreciate the improved lighting. Anyway, just want that on the record.
I think we're out of questions.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
What is the will of the body? Commissioner Pulis, you like to state your motion?
I move in case 2024-0010 to approve alternative 1: traffic signals, lighting, roadway, and sidewalk improvements identified in the Context Sensitive Solutions Design Study Report for the AMAT's 4th Avenue Signal and Lighting Upgrades, Cordova Street to Ingrah Street, subject to the conditions shown on pages 6 and 7 of the staff report.
That was seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I support this motion. I think the alternatives analysis was appropriate. I will note, there's requests for a little more bike engagement. The proper alternative was chosen, I think, based on meeting project goals and adding pedestrian amenities where they could in a reasonable budget. It's a good next phase of the project, obviously it's a continuation, and it's just more of the same. And it looks like the design team is also doing a good job of engaging and getting what they can into the project and involving PI as much as possible.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Hearing none, we will call for the vote.
Mr. Strike, how do you vote?
Yep.
Ms. Eber?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to our public hearing item. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is, one, after staff presentation is complete on a public hearing item, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups and community councils will receive five minutes, individuals three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record. A written notice of intent to appeal, in accordance with AMC 2103050A4A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Following approval of the written findings of fact and decision, any party of interest may, within 20 days, file an appeal by filing a notice of appeal and paying the appeal fee and deposit in accordance with Section 2103050. The notice of appeal must be filed with the planning director on the form prescribed by the municipality. If the applicant is not, if the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant's notice of appeal shall include proof of service on the applicant. Can we have the staff presentation in case 2024-0012?
Thank you, Chair Spinelli. So the municipality of Anchorage Real Estate Services Department is requesting to rezone 8.98 acres of land from R3 to R4A, family residential mixed-use district. The site is located southwest of the intersection of East 40th Avenue and Denali Street in Anchorage. The site is classified as urban residential high with residential mixed-use development overlay per the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, Land Use Plan map. Because of the petition site's current classification is compatible with the proposed rezone, and accompanying amendment to the comp plan is not required. No objections to this rezone were received from reviewing agencies. The midtown community council submitted a resolution of support found in the staff packet as 2023-05. In the approval criteria for rezones, staff has found that criteria 1 is met. This rezone is the long-term interest of the citizens of Anchorage. Rezoning this parcel from medium-density to high-density residential could result in potential gain of residential dwelling units when factoring the area of the site. Staff finds that criteria 2 has been met. The rezone request both complies and conforms with the petition site's designation of urban residential high with residential mixed-use development overlay within the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan. The R4A is intended, is the intended zoning district for the area that, found in that plan. It's also located within a underutilized residential lands well-positioned for compatible infill or high-density residential development near downtown or midtown shopping, transit parks, schools, or employment. The site is also adequately served with properly-sized public water and sewer services. Additionally, the rezone is consistent with the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan Goal 1, Goal 4, Goal 2, Land Use Plan 1.2, and 4.1. Those deal with infill and redevelopment, meeting the housing, employment needs of residents and businesses in Anchorage. It's also found Anchorage 2020 Policy 11 and 14, and those deal with mixed-density residential development shall be permitted in identified zoning districts. Staff finds criteria and condition 3 is met. The rezone is consistent with the purpose of the R4A multifamily mixed-use district. It also finds condition 3 has been met, both a, subcondition A, B, and C. It's, as I said, it's classified as urban residential high. The petition site is within the city center and transit supportive development corridors in the midtown. C has been met. The site is located directly southwest of the intersection of East 40th and Denali. East 40th is classified as a collector in this area, and Denali Street is classified as a Class II minor arterial. There is no point within the petition site that extends more than 1/4 mile beyond the intersection of these two arterials. So as stated, those criteria are met. Staff finds criteria 4 has been met. It is compatible with the surrounding zoning districts and existing developments surrounding the petition site. The surrounding zoning districts include PLI and B3. Staff finds condition 5 criteria is met. As stated, public water and sewer services are available this parcel. Fixed route public transportation is currently available at site on 60-minute headways and 15- to 30-minute headways on Tudor Road. Staff has found that condition 6 criteria has been met. The proposed rezone is unlikely to adversely impact the existing natural environment. While there may be noise originated from the site during future development, site operations will not be permitted to exceed noise control standards. Staff has found condition 7 criteria has been met. So when we're analyzing a rezone, the planning department can not only consider the planned use, but rather the shift from what is and not allowed under the current zoning designation, and what could be allowed under that proposed zoning. and what could be allowed under that proposed zoning. So given this methodology, rezoning the petition site to R4A would allow for a variety of commercial uses that would not otherwise be permitted under the existing R3. However, there are compatibility protections with the R4A district standards, which call for review of the mixed-use development. Staff has found that criteria eight has been met. It's consistent with the parcel's designation, land use policies. The immediate area surrounding the petition site is classified as city center, commercial corridor, and community facility park. Placing R4A zoning district within this area will be appropriate considering the petition site's proximity to corridors, intersections, and two minor arterials. Also is important to note that the Anchorage has no lack of residential housing capacity based upon the current zoning, and this rezone will facilitate in the development of more potential residential dwelling units than what the R3 allows for. The criteria, the criteria nine has been met. It will not result in a split zone lot. So with that, therefore, the department recommends approval of the criteria, and that's, condition is found on page eight of the staff packet. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
I should note that the petitioner's representative and HOB is here tonight as well.
Commissioner Ron.
Through the chair, staff, thank you for that concise report. For the record, could you please inform us all what the current use of the lot is?
Through the chair, sure, yes. So as stated there in page two of the staff packet, I'll read a little bit of background. The parcel was originally purchased by the federal government in 2004, intended to be the National Archive Building. The applicant would like to rezone the parcel of land purchased by the MOA in 2017, and there were improvements made to the site, including fill for a foundation and driveways on Denali Street and East 40th, but since then, the site has remained vacant since it was been purchased by the MOA.
Commissioner Ron.
If I may follow up, I am a bit confused or perhaps just not understanding where this is going. So maybe I'll rephrase the question. Is the petition site being used for anything currently? Is it being inhabited? Is it?
I would, I know where you're going with that, and I don't think the plan, I mean, we're here for a rezone of this R3 to R4A. Yeah, there's, it's currently vacant. Apparently, there's some homeless going on there, but I don't know. That's not something that's worth stating as the planning department, no.
Okay, thanks for your response to the question, and for the record, my understanding is that the petition site is currently being used for unhoused people. It's my personal observation and driving by and my understanding as a member of the community. So thank you.
Okay. Would the petitioner like to come forward? Do you have a presentation for us? Push the button. Now, there you go.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Bree Kiefer. I'm a landscape architect at Huddle, and I'm here today with Tiffany Briggs, the real estate director, and then my colleague Cass Frost, also with Huddle. And Sean did a great job going over all the details of the application, so I won't reiterate all of that, but I will go over a few, a couple things first. I want to go over some background of the site, the proposed rezone, and then the factors to consider as outlined in Title 21 to help guide your decision. So as Sean said, a lot of people refer to the site as the archive site because it was intended for the National Archive Building. That project did not happen, but there was site development that did occur, as you can see in the aerial. And the site obviously is the white box in the middle of that aerial. And the MOA purchased the site in 2017. The proposed rezone, again, R3, which is mixed residential to R4A multifamily mixed use. R3 is intended for low-rise multi-story buildings, densities between 15 to 40 dwelling units, whereas R4A has a minimum dwell, density of 20 dwelling units per acre. I'm sorry, 20 dwelling units per acre, the 15 to 40 dwelling units per acre for the R3. But as Sean stated, R4A also has opportunities for commercial. So really, the intent of this rezone from the MOA standpoint is to align the zoning with the vision from the community from the 2040 Land Use Plan. 2040 identifies it as urban high residential and residential mixed use. And although 2040 does say urban high residential is compatible with R3, R4, it explicitly says it's compatible with R4A when the residential mixed use is overlaid. So the rezone would make the site compatible with 2040. And ultimately, you know, not on top of just making the zoning compatible with the vision for the community, it's really to encourage housing ultimately, which is a huge need. Like Sean said, this provides higher density opportunities than what currently is available with the current zoning. In terms of considering the factors to where R4A zone is appropriate, Title 21, Chapter Four states locate a land use designation in a center or corridor in the 2040 Land Use Plan that allow for R4A. So as stated, the designations are compatible with the R4A district. Another criteria is that it's near a major employment center or a major city center, and the midtown city center is identified by the purple on this map, so it's kind of right at the heart of midtown city center. And then another criteria is that it's next to a transit supportive development, which is, here you can kind of see it as the horizontal striping along C Street. It's immediately adjacent to that, and then within a quarter mile of an arterial and collector intersection. So Denali Street is the arterial and 40th, running along the north, is a collector street. Surrounding zoning is obviously PLI here at the library, PLI as a part of Cuddy Family Midtown Park. That's kind of a funky parcel in that it has split lot zoning, but the intent of the city is to make that all consistently PLI, and then B3 surrounding that. So in terms of considering housing, higher housing densities as appropriate for this area, it's within walking distance of commercial opportunities such as a grocery store, a hardware store, and other amenities. In terms of our process, we went to the Midtown Community Council, and as Sean stated, they were supportive and did provide a resolution of support. So with that, I think we'll save the remainder of our time if needed, and then we're available for questions.
Commissioner Krishna has a question.
Thank you. I think my question is a little bit about the market opportunities. I know there's no development plan for the site immediately, but I'm wondering if the department is planning to put out an RFP this year or if there is a viable market. And the reason I ask that is because large parcels, and I think it's no secret on the public record, many times in this room, there's been a lot of talk about the current use, right, which is a large-scale homeless camp. And I think about the Third and Ingraham site, right? So I just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, the use and rezone certainly seems compatible with the land use plan, the things that this commission is called on to think about, but also I do want to make sure that, that the timing works out, right? Even if it looks good on paper, I guess I want to make sure that this is in the best interest of our city and there is some prospect of development in line with this new rezone. Because this is a city-owned parcel, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. I think I'll start to answer that, and then if it's okay, have Tiffany Briggs, the director, chime in. The intent is to seek an RFP process, and that's one of the reasons for the rezone, so that someone proposing development would have to abide by the R4A district, which the site is intended for. Would you like to add to that at all?
Hi, Tiffany Briggs, Real Estate Department. I don't think I have anything to add necessarily, but the intent is, yes, to put on RFP this year and preferably in the first half of this year.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
I guess I will jump in with one question. In this rezone to R4A, did you find any R4A projects that exist in town? Something to look at as an example?
I might ask, because we, early on in the project, at like the pre-op meeting, we discussed that a bit. I might see if Sean has anything to add to that.
Mr. Chair, I believe just one thing that was discussed is the R4A allow, not, you know, R3 right now is pretty limited. R4 is gonna allow a little more, other than residential, you can have commercial. And that was kind of the selling factor.
Yeah, I mean, I asked that question only because I'm a critic of R4A and R3, because of, there's so many rules and restrictions within those zonings. But Commissioner Krishna.
I was gonna ask a question to staff that I forgot to ask earlier, which is, the R4A is a very new zone, right? I believe we just approved it last year. Is this the first R4A rezone that has taken place?
I believe you did see, possibly a year ago, it was over off of Chugash Way. That was an R4A rezone that the planning zoning took a look at. I think that was, was that J.J. Brooks or maybe Seth's project? But it was over there off, near Spinnard, kind of over by Chugash Way. So this would be like kind of the second one, since this has been gone through, and it was very similar to this.
I believe Devin Hand's, Arctic, near Spinnard?
Correct.
Yeah, I think just to kind of add to that is, to Commissioner Spennelli's concern about the restrictiveness, hopefully, the rewrite of the R4A district helps alleviate that issue that maybe came up before.
All right, thank you. I see no further questions. We will now open the hearing to public testimony. Anybody wishing to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, we will close the public testimony. Oh, would you like to offer a rebuttal? You have 5 minutes and 23 seconds remaining. Okay. What is the will of the body? We'll close the public hearing, and what is the will of the body? Commissioner Pulis, would you like to state your motion?
Sure. I move in case 2024-0013 to recommend to the Anchorage Assembly approval of the rezone from R3 mixed residential district to R4A multifamily residential mixed-use district.
Seconded by Commissioner Winchester, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I intend to support the motion. It meets the approval criteria as noted in the staff packet. Most notably, it has the ability to increase needed residential housing units, and the proposed rezone fits the comprehensive plan. I'd also like to note that it's support from the community council and no objections from reviewing agencies.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? I will add that it is nice to see the municipality stepping up and committing to the R4A. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and prior commissioner for putting the motion on the table. I do ultimately intend to support the motion. I agree with staff in terms of its findings, consistency against the criteria that we have before us. You may have noted from my prior questioning of staff that of interest to me is current use of this parcel. And I appreciate a prior commissioner's comments around best interest for the community. And I'm struggling with how to levy that in this sense, and I don't currently feel okay approving as-is without better acknowledgement of that fact. So for the commission's interest in either improvement and adoption or rejection, I'd like to, I think, add a condition, and the condition's gonna look something like, request that the petitioner provide a transition plan for occupants of the parcel at time of sale. And I'm not sure if that's the right way to do that or not, and be interested in thoughts from other commissioners who may have more knowledge about this aspect if they feel so inclined. Understanding that the RFP process will take some time, and thereupon there may be sale of this parcel, and I, I'm a little unclear as to whether or not there'll be a change of responsibility at that time with current use of the property. And I would like to see those who currently own it put forward a recognition and plan for transition of those occupants, unhoused people that are there, so that they're not just, I guess, disregarded in that sense, if that makes sense. So with that, I'll stop talking. Perhaps some input from other commissioners, and we can work this one out.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, I would not support that amendment. I feel like that wades into very tricky and confusing legal territory when this is already a publicly owned parcel, and the city is, of course, subject to federal, state, and local laws regarding camp abatement and many things that are outside the sort of knowledge and jurisdiction of this commission. So I believe that safeguards for current occupants, if they should exist, are not the purview of this condition nor an appropriate thing for this condition, for this commission to add as a conditional use. I do appreciate where you're coming from and have sort of a broad thought, similar to that, about just ensuring that the interest in the site, I just want to, as a comment, this commission often sees property owners who've newly purchased a parcel come back to us for a rezone, so I just want to make sure, I guess, that that doesn't happen in this case, right? So I don't have anything else to add, I guess.
I'll just add that I agree with Commissioner Krishna. I think that the way you would add a condition to a rezone would be with a special limitation. A special limitation zoning lasts with the property until that comes back before this commission. So it seems inappropriate to put a lasting special limitation on the zoning that pertains to just current standards. I will mention, I guess, I will state that my understanding of the municipality's relinquishment of any of its property would result in a public hearing at the assembly. So I think that your time to, to make, make, voice those concerns would be given in due time. I'd also just say that I don't know of any difference between what's currently going on at the property is affected by the difference in zoning, so I don't see a negative impact in approving the rezone, so. Commissioner Pulis?
I would just follow up by saying that I kind of agree with the previous commissioners just on the economic, financials of the situation, but maybe we could add a finding, just noting something to it? I don't know what that finding would be, but just adding a note, it's a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Pulis, I appreciate the offer. I think the good dialogue, which is had as a commission and it being recorded in the minutes, meets my level of satisfaction. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Strike, how do you vote?
No.
No?
Yeah, to clarify, we're voting on the amendment.
Excuse me, through the chair, the amendment was never stated. He was just...
It was never stated?
Discussion. So this is on the main motion?
Main motion, yes.
In favor of?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Eber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to case 2024-0012, may we have staff's presentation, please?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Anchorage Assembly are proposing a text amendment to Anchorage Municipal Code AMC Section 2113060, conformity characteristics of use. The intent of this draft ordinance is to remove the requirement to place up to 10% of a development's project costs into a municipal public improvement fund. This requirement is used when no characteristics can be brought towards conformity without causing other characteristics to come out of compliance, or if the only characteristics left to be addressed are so major as to require relocating the structure or something of similar magnitude. Amending this section of code does not eliminate the requirement of future development from improving non-conforming characteristics when a project falls under the requirements of AMC 2113060C. The Assembly has referred this ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. An Anchorage Assembly meeting providing a public hearing for this ordinance has not been scheduled as of yet. Approval criteria, text amendments may be approved if the Assembly finds that all of the following approval criteria have been met, also the Planning and Zoning Commission. Criteria one, the proposed amendment will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. The removal of this requirement to place funds into a municipal account simplifies the process of bringing characteristics into compliance of use. This process is infrequently used and does not minimize the economic impact to the property owner. The 10% is placed in a municipal account dedicated to public improvements within the community council area that the development is in. Criteria two, the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the stated purpose of this title. Goal two, infill and redevelopment. Goal seven, infill development is compatible with the valued characteristics of surrounding properties and neighborhoods. The change to AMC 2113060C can be considered an incentive to creating infill and redevelopment opportunities for multifamily, commercial, mixed-use, community use, commercial marijuana, and industrial development projects. This criteria three, the proposed amendment is necessary or desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions. The removal of this requirement for excess funds to be placed in a municipal account is intended to provide opportunities to use those funds within their redevelopment projects. The proposed ordinance will provide some economic relief in the redevelopment of existing structures to be used for housing. The city's current economic conditions and the intent to increase housing opportunities and reduce housing costs make this a desirable change to Title 21. There were no comments or objections from reviewing agencies regarding this code amendment. Public hearing notices were mailed to the Federation of Community Councils and to all the community councils on December 12th. There were two attachments that were actually part of the plan. They're the very last two pages in your packet, that were comments from both the Anchorage Community Land Trust, who actually had, has used this process or did use this process back in 2016, 2017, and comments from Cookinlet Housing. Therefore, the Planning Department recommends an approval to the Anchorage Assembly of PZC case number 22412 with a minor modification to the proposed language in number four, which is on page three of your staff packet, with the underlined section adding the director in consultation with the applicant determines. This way, the director is able to decipher and figure out what, if any, major changes within compliance need to be brought into compliance. I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I guess before reading this packet, I wasn't aware of the municipal public improvement fund and kind of this option to have the 10% towards non-conforming uses just be provided to the fund instead of into the project. And I was just wondering if you were able to provide a little more context for how frequently this is a thing that comes up? And, you know, some of the discussion here and comments relate to the inability to kind of track or difficulty of tracking and using that money and ensuring that it's used in a way that is, you know, in the relevant area, benefits the relevant area? And if you also are able to give any context on kind of what that process actually looks like in practice?
Through the chair, Commissioner Gardner. Yes, so this has been in place since code changed, of course, in January 1st, 2014. You could still use old code up until December 31st, 2015. There's only been two cases that this has actually been used. The first one is the, sorry, Anchorage Land Trust. It was used in Mountain View, kind of across from Clark, where Airport Heights and Mountain View connect. They did 170, so the 10% was, they did $178,000 worth of improvements interior, and they couldn't bring any characteristics into compliance. So $17,800 was set aside. And there is no, there is no fund. There's mention of a fund, but no money ever is, in the two cases, no money's ever gone into a fund. In both cases, in this case, the $17,800 was written straight to the Parks and Rec Department. I have the receipt right here, if you'd like to see it, for improvements at Davis Park in Mountain View. The other case was in 2017. Yes, and it was the Arby's on Muldoon, across from Fred Myers. I don't know if you're familiar with that, that location. There's a Taco Bell, there's an Arby's. The Arby's did about $200,000 worth of interior improvements, and there was no way they could bring any characteristics into compliance. And so $20,000 again was written directly to Parks and Rec for Chanchnu Park, the new one with the little skating oval and where they do the farmer's market in the summertime. So yes, and that's part of the reason of eliminating this, Commissioner Gardner, is because there is not really a way to track where these funds go. And again, they've never gone into some funding hole. They've always gone straight to Parks and Rec to improve facility, improve things within the community that they're in.
Thank you. I appreciate that context.
Can we just clarify real quick? Was there a change from number four in the packet? Did, or is it already written?
It's, yes. Chair Spinelli, if you look at page, I believe it's page eight, seven, if you look at page seven of your staff packet, that's the proposed amendment changes. So they're eliminating all of number three in Title 21. And then they're eliminating basically the bottom half of number four. And then where staff is recommending additional language in four, which will actually become three, because three's being eliminated.
Thank you. Commissioner Krishna has a question.
I may reserve my question for after the public hearing.
Seeing no more questions, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify, please come forward, state your name.
Do I need a question or?
Light is on, so...
Great.
Hot mic.
Hot mic, thanks. Okay, I'm John Isaacs. I'm a Ternigan Community Council Board member. I'm co-chair of the land use committee, and I live at 2418 Forest Park Drive.
Are you, sorry, are you speaking on behalf of the group?
Yes, I am speaking on behalf of the group.
Okay, go ahead.
Great. The Ternigan Community Council Board has reviewed the proposed ordinance change in staff report, and we have the following comments. We understand the request for the ordinance change, the need to facilitate redevelopment and infill in the case made by the Anchorage Community Land Trust and Cookinlet Housing that it creates a disincentive for renovating older properties. The language you see added to the ordinance is the director in consultation with the applicant makes the determination regarding conformance provides us with a certain amount of safeguard that this amendment would not be abused as a matter of convenience. Therefore, we support the proposed change. We have the following suggestions regarding process. The process and considerations used by the planning director in working with the applicant regarding non-conformity determinations should be made transparent and provided to community councils and the public. Where there is an issue of non-conformance in a case made by an applicant, the affected community council should be notified and asked for input prior to the decision. A record should be kept of the decision regarding conformity and distributed to affected community councils. And finally, when it is apparent that an applicant determines there may be significant issues associated with code compliance and redeveloping a property, we would suggest a notify the affected community council and consider coordination with them. Other than that, thank you for our comments. I do have a copy of this, it would be helpful to have.
I think we're fine.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any rebuttal from staff?
Well, I'm hoping I can, I got all that. Again, this is a very rare instance, and I'm not 100% sure that the community councils weren't notified, but I'd have to look into seeing how that would even be. Mr. Chair, in both cases that we have done, there's not a planning case. It was all done through the building permit process. And so our staff doesn't even, we didn't even review, I mean, we reviewed it. It was done as a land use review. So as you're aware, when you come in for a building permit, that's the process. It was handled under, and it was noted, it was triggered through the zoning review of a land use when issuing a building permit. So the planning department doesn't review it, doesn't enforce it in that sense. It was all done through land use. So I'm not sure how we would notify a community council when it's just a standard building permit process, as currently is how it's handled.
We have a question from Commissioner Pulis. I'm a little late in getting to it, so I don't know who it's to, but you can ask it of anybody.
It's a question to staff. Can anyone from the public pick up the site conformance reviews that, you know, you guys do in the planning department? Do they have access to that, or is that only for the person who owns the property?
Through the chair, Commissioner Pulis. Everything that goes through the planning department is on the portal and is, you can search either by the case number, or you can search by the community council. And you can actually see back for many, many, many years. But you can, you know, if you had a question about your specific community council, any cases, plating or zoning or variances or anything like that, if you put in, once you get into the portal, if you put in the search, your community council, it will pull up everything from the last couple of years and the most recent ones and when they're supposed to be heard. But we don't notify other than, again, this doesn't go through the planning process, so there is no public notification because there's no case. It's all through the building permit process and land use review.
But if the owner of a property requests to have a site conformance review of their property, can the general public get a copy of that? Because then they could compare that to the case, and then they could, that's how they could get that information, I'm thinking. And that's, I don't know if you have the answer.
I do not have that answer, Commissioner Pulis, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll direct this question to staff, but I don't know if you have the answer to this, or if maybe some other commissioners might have a better sense of this. But I think when I first looked at this, I shared the similar concern that we heard in the testimony in that it maybe creates an opportunity for abuse in a way, or certainly changes the incentives if nothing else. Because at the moment, there's only been two cases, but there's really no need for an applicant to push to have this finding, right? Because either way, they're spending $10,000 and they'd rather have that go onto the site than not. So they'd prefer to find some non-conforming use that can be corrected. And as it relates to those incentives, I guess my question is, if there are non-conforming uses that can be addressed, that 10, or I'm sorry, not $10,000, I said earlier, I think it's 10%, that can be addressed with that 10%, in practice, does that end up looking like it increases the cost of the project by 10%? Or is that able to be kind of allocated and built into improvements that we've made in some fashion such that it has a smaller percentage of cost to the project? And I don't know if that question makes sense, but I'm just, I'm curious. I'm trying to understand what this process ends up doing to the bottom line project cost compared with putting that 10% into addressing non-conforming uses.
Can you give me two seconds to find Title 13 real quick? Because there is a limit, actually, or sorry, a threshold that has, before that even the 10% kicks in.
I think while I was doing that, I'll give you my cloudy recollection of what I think is going on with this one. So like imagine just a big square building in the middle of the lot. They've got all their parking good, ADA, green infrastructure stuff. It's all good except for their building slid over and they're five feet in their landscaping easement on one side of their property. So to fix that, they'd have to lop off 30 feet of their building and then put some trees in on that side, which is a pretty absorbent cost and disruption to the site. And if they have no other thing on site required to conform, you know, to put the 10% to, basically what this would say is that you have to give us the 10% to this fund, and it just goes to the local park. And so what they're getting rid of is just that extra step of, okay, you know, you don't have to spend, you can't fix anything else on site except for chopping your building off, so we're going to make you put this money into that fund. But if they lop that off, they're not spending it on their property. So they're thinking that's, and it's been used twice since 2014. And so I think they're just saying, well, if I can't spend on my property, can I just not spend that money, knowing this option is never used, is my belief of what's going on here.
That, sorry, did you want me to answer or no? I didn't find the threshold. I thought it was 100,000, but through the chair, Commissioner Gardner, and thanks, Commissioner Pulis. Part of that too is if it cannot bring in, if it can't be brought into conformity, there is also the AEC, which you guys don't see, or do, I can't remember, which is an alternative equivalent compliance. So say they couldn't, they didn't have enough space for landscaping on one side of the building, that doesn't mean, but they do on another side, or somewhere else where they could, they could put some extra landscaping to meet the criteria of what the code requires for total landscaping for that area. Again, it doesn't eliminate that they, like you said, Commissioner Gardner, it doesn't eliminate that they don't have to do anything to bring stuff up to compliance. It's if they can't, there's, and that's, again, through the director has to determine with the applicant that there is nothing they can do anywhere on the property or anywhere to bring anything into compliance.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Pulis. I think I, I'll just give one more to have restating my question, and then I'll leave it at that. I think what I'm trying to understand is from the perspective of a developer, someone who's working on this property, if, say, your baseline is, whatever the numbers are, you know, threshold setting that aside. you know, threshold setting that aside, say you've got a project that's $100,000, and so there's 10% that's supposed to be contributing towards reducing the non-conforming and the non-conformances. And if, I guess, the question is, if you can do that, if you are able to do that, and you don't have to trigger this, from the perspective of someone who's doing that, do they end up saying, okay, this is going to cost me $110,000, and it's still, maybe you get some better landscaping out of it than you otherwise would, versus they do this, it still costs $110,000, and they don't get that landscaping? So, they'd prefer, you know, they're trying to avoid this because they don't get any benefit of that. But my question is, from the perspective of the developer, is it still, is it fair to say that it's $110,000 either way? Or if they are doing the non-conforming uses, and they're needing to put 10% into that, they're able to adjust the project in some way that ends up practically being a better deal than this other option? And the question is geared to understand the incentives now. If this is, if this becomes no longer a requirement to spend the $10,000, if you can, you know, meet this trigger in discussions with the director, showing that no non-conforming uses are available, how strongly people will be pushing to try to get that finding, or if that's not a fair concern?
I actually have sort of an answer for him.
Commissioner Krishna?
I do have sort of an answer for you. So, I worked at the land trust at the time that this happened. Essentially, my read is that these are very, very small-time developers, right? People who are doing one project ever, who don't know how to navigate the alternative equivalent compliance system, who are the only ones getting dinged with this. People who have a little bit more knowledge of how to navigate all of the code compliance are not going through this process at all. This is essentially a surprise 10% ding, or much more, frankly, if you end up embroiled in the whole system that lets you think you are doing a small office conversion, and then you end up paying $400,000 in bringing your building up to code that you never budgeted for, right? So, this is, in my mind, just one of the very complicated bits of our code that make infill projects exorbitant, right? And not just that, they scare people away from doing them because they have no idea how much they're going to cost.
I'll just add that Commissioner Krishna is absolutely correct, because in the instances where ASD runs into this, there are several alternative equivalent compliances and variances that go into whatever they end up doing. Case in point would be Aquarian Charter schools, like $300,000 landscape bill that resulted from a roof replacement and furnace replacement.
Commissioner George?
Thank you to the chair, and I appreciate Commissioner Krishna's perspective on this. I was a little bit familiar with that project, having been the Mountain View Community Council president at the time, and gladly spending all $17,000 on Davis Park. However, I think that, for me, it's more of a perspective of, when you have a bond fund or insurance of some kind, if you're, whether it's car insurance, unemployment insurance, workers' comp insurance, whatever it is, you're paying a cost to put resources into a fund that will help you if you need it. So, if you had a developer that faced a very cost-exorbitant compliance issue, if that fund came to your rescue and you got to benefit from it at some point, then maybe taking this money from everyone else who does such a development might make sense. But that's not what's happened here. What has happened is, it's essentially a fee or a tax, because it does nothing to improve the project in any way, and what is measurable is the cost to a development. And as Commissioner Krishna mentioned, these are smaller developers typically, and what's not measurable are the projects that became uneconomical, or questionably economical, and didn't happen because of this disincentive in place. So, I believe that we need to renew our ability, we need to increase our incentives for renovations, redevelopments, and infill. And I think this is a fantastic way to do that, to take away this disincentive. I'm actually kind of excited for the opportunity to consider this proposal. I know it's small, and it may have only impacted, you know, two developers that we could measure, but I think the impact has been more than that. I think it has scared some developers from doing redevelopments, so I guess I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Pulis?
Just to quickly follow up, as soon as you said AEC, I was like, ah, that's where they're going to go every time but two times, basically. So, it makes total sense, it just never impacts anybody hardly ever, unless, you know, there's just no other way they can meet alternative equivalent compliance. That's why it's been twice since 2014. So, in my mind, just like the other commissioner said, it's basically a small financial reduction for the developers to promote housing increasing and all that good stuff we're sitting here trying to do.
I see no more questions. What's the will of the body? Oh, we're closing the public hearing first. What's the will of the body? Commissioner Krishna, would you like to state your motion?
Sure. I move in case 2024-0012 to recommend to the Anchorage Assembly approval of a text amendment to AMC Section 2113060, non-conformities, characteristics of use, to remove the requirement to place up to 10% of a development's project costs into a municipal public improvement fund.
That was seconded by Commissioner George. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I intend to support the motion. I believe, as we've discussed today and heard from staff, this is not a process that's been used, it's been used two times in 10 years, which is not an efficient use of municipal resources, and it clearly adds to infill development costs, which is something that we're trying to spurn incentivize at this point in Anchorage. So, I intend to support it. I guess I would also strongly encourage the Assembly and the department to consider looking at the 2113060C, that compliance section in totality, and I would be very interested in a report on how effective that is, and what it does to development costs in our urban neighborhoods. So, yeah, I do intend to support it, but I would actually be very interested in taking it further.
Commissioner Gardner?
I guess just a question for the moving commissioner, maybe a clarification, if that motion includes staff's recommended amendments on page three?
Thank you, it does.
Thanks, and I think with that, you know, I support the motion as well, I support the intent of it. I recognize that there's a concern, which I think was present in the testimony we heard, about how this maybe changes the incentives, in that if, you know, if you can argue that there is no way to bring the site towards conformity without causing other characteristics to come out of compliance, it suddenly makes it a lot cheaper than being able to put some money into actually bringing it towards conformity. But I think the amendment that staff recommended will help make clear that the planning department will be involved in that conversation, and I think, you know, their interest is ensuring that it moves towards conformity if at all possible. And we also heard testimony that that can include, through the alternative equivalent compliance process, which provides additional tools towards improving the conformity.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Strike, how do you vote?
Yep.
Ms. Eber?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Thank you. Good night.